You're ready, sir.
Oh, you pushy...
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, roll call.
Pauls?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Festerson?
Here.
Gurnat?
Here.
Jerem?
Milton?
Here.
Mr. President?
Here. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our invocation by Councilmember Gary Gurnat?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thought it was time that there's no really special occasion, no national day of such and such, but I'd always like to say thank you from time to time to all of our neighborhood leaders that do a lot of things behind the scenes, behind the cameras, and never get that pat on the back that I think that they rightly deserve. They're neighborhoods' voices, they're the conduit down here to government, and I'd just like to have you all just remember and kind of say thank you in your hearts. If you are a neighborhood leader and you're here for a reason today, or just to be a sponge and absorb more how the system works, that's great, and thank you for doing that. And to all those out there in TV land that may be watching, thank you for all that you do. Amen.
Amen.
City Clerk certifies publication on the Daily Record, the official newspaper, on April 22nd, notice for a pre-council and regular city council meeting, April 26, 2016. Their current copy opening exact posted in white binder on these four legislative chambers.
Thank you. This city, this Omaha City Council meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it is not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. This, this, these actions detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic devices. And before we begin to follow our agenda today, we have a proclamation that I was asked to read. I refused, hoping that I could figure out some, some way for her to stay, but since I can't do that, I guess I'll go ahead and read the proclamation anyway. And it's in honor of Judy, Judy Varner, the president and CEO of the Nebraska Humane Society. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas Judy Varner has served as president and CEO of the Nebraska Humane Society for 18 years, and whereas the vision of the Nebraska Humane Society is a good home for every pet achieved by working to provide guidance, support, and education to all pet owners, and whereas, as president and CEO of the Nebraska Humane Society, Judy oversees an organization with a $12 million endowment and an $11 million annual budget, and whereas the Nebraska Humane Society has become one of the nation's premier animal shelters under Judy's nationally recognized leadership, and whereas the Nebraska Humane Society handles 10,000 adoptions each year and cares for more than 20,000 animals each year, and whereas through Judy's tenure, more than 142,000 animals have been adopted into loving new homes, and more than 54,000 animals have been rescued and returned to their grateful owners, and whereas Judy's expertise has helped Omaha implement innovative and effective animal control practices that ensure the safety of residents and the well-being of our pets, and whereas Judy is retiring on April 30, 2016, and whereas the Omaha, the Omaha City Council recognizes Judy for her dedication and service to the community, now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Omaha, do hereby declare the 26th day of April, 2016, as Judy Varner Day, in witness where we have set forth our hand and cause the official seal of the City of Omaha to be affixed on this 26th day of April, 2016." Official call. I tried really hard not to read this proclamation, but she's going to retire anyway, so...
I'm going to ride my horse into this, that's right. Thank you all very much.
Two words. You can't leave without a word. One or two words you have to say.
Anything. Well, let's see. All I'm going to say is...
This is the nicest time I've spent at this podium, having gotten broiled and ripped apart several times. I am incredibly proud of our relationship with Omaha, incredibly proud of the partnership. You all are very welcoming. You can't stand it when we come to you with ordinance changes because you know what it's going to unleash on you, but you're always good sports, and I just can't thank you enough for what you all do for the City of Omaha and for allowing us to do what we do for the City of Omaha. So, thank you very much. Thank you.
Maybe you should take a photo. Everybody wanted to get together around here for a photo at the end.
Okay, we'll do, we'll, we'll do some comments and then we'll do a photo. Mr. Festerson?
I love the enthusiasm. This is going to be good.
Did you see all those Jack in the Box?
We did what she said. I didn't.
But first, we get some further opportunities to embarrass Judy before we take a photo, with some additional comments from council members. I just want to welcome Judy and her husband, and all the staff members that are here and supporters, and board members too. It's really great, and I think indicative of all the support you do have in Omaha for the wonderful job you've done over the years. For me personally, working with you in the mayor's office for four or five years through contractual issues and sometimes emotional issues that you referenced here at the podium, I have found in my years of city service that one of the most emotional things and one of the most topics that generate the most interest and passions and the interest are things having to do with animals in the city. I know you've experienced that too. A lot of people don't realize that animal control is a major city service that we've contracted to the Humane Society, and I think that's important to point out too. You've all done a wonderful job with that over the years, and people take that for granted, I think, sometimes, so I wanted to point out what an important service and public safety item that is that everyone should appreciate in terms of what the Humane Society offers our city. I'd also say you pay attention to the small things, too. One of, one of the major ordinances I passed as a city councilperson was responding to a constituent who observed that sugar gliders and hedgehogs in the city weren't officially legal. So, I remember, I remember talking to you about it. I had no idea what a sugar glider was, and also with Mark's assistance, we got that passed and made some people very happy, and that's gone very, very well throughout our city as well. And on a personal note, I would just say you also helped my family adopt its own dog several years ago, which turned out to be a wonderful pet for us and for my kids, and we remember that, that experience with you fondly, like I'm sure thousands of families do, so I very much appreciate that, and still have the sheltering shelter pets story in my office in the city council chambers, so my gratitude for all you've done, and I know we'll, we'll keep you around in Omaha and look forward to seeing you again soon.
Mr. Gurnat?
Thank you, Mr. President. I did have some words, but I just got a, a text came in, I think that sums this all up. Judy, thank you for helping me find a new home. I'm doing fine. Signed, Medusa. I think that says it all.
And Judy, I think, I know that you were unsuccessful in getting me to adopt a pet, but Mark's still there and he's still working on it, so I'm, I'm pretty sure one of these days, I'm going to own something.
We'll deliver, Mark. We'll deliver.
Okay. Dr. Thompson?
Judy, whenever a constituent attempted to dog me out, you rescued me, and so I'd like to give you a nice hearty Arsenio Hall, woof, 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 woof.
Let's take a picture. Rich is... Oh, Rich, I'm sorry, Rich. Okay, go ahead, Rich.
Let me make one thing. I still can remember your influence when, when I was in the legislature, because you came down not with a smile, but with a little bit of pressure. And the interesting thing is, just within this past week or two, she gave me some advice that would save me some additional hassle as a city councilman. I appreciate that. Thank you.
We'll do this really quickly.
Yeah, we're going to come out front. We're going to take a picture of them.
Right here, right here, right here. Everybody.
And fill in the roles behind. Judy wants you in front, yeah.
I know. Come here, come here. Short people. Get rolling. Get rolling. Up here, up here, up here, up here. Keep coming, keep coming.
This is going to be a challenge.
It's like, it's like herding cats.
Farrell.
Yo, trip down the front, Neil, you're going to make a...
One, two, three.
Three, hold on.
Maybe we should do a video.
Smile, come on. I have some dogs.
Well, I guess I'm glad we didn't have to call Squad One an injured one. Mr. Clerk?
Ordinance on second reading, Ray Bonds. Item number five, ordinance authorizing and approving a lease purchase agreement between the City of Omaha Public Facilities Corporation and the City approving the terms and conditions of the corporate, corporations approximately $80 million lease revenue bonds, lease revenue refunding bonds, taxable lease revenue refunding bonds, to be issued in four or more separate series.
Public hearing on agenda, item number five is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Zoning ordinance on filing and planning board attachments, item number six, ordinance to rezone property located at 615 Pierce Street from general commercial district to R7 medium density multifamily residential district. Property is also located within an NCEC District A Planning Board and Plan Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number six is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Been moved and seconded to approve item six, there are no lights. Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Six is passed, seven to zero. Next is seven through nine. Seven is ordinance to amend the boundaries of the major commercial corridor overlay district and incorporate in that district, the property located at 3809 North 90th Street. A Planning Board and Plan Department recommend approval. And eight is an ordinance to rezone the property from developed reserve district and community commercial district to community commercial district. A Planning Board and Plan Department recommend approval. And nine is resolution three plat transmitted herewith entitled, "North 90th Plaza Replat Three," is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Plan Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda items number seven through nine are today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve items seven through nine, no further lights. Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Seven through nine are passed, seven to zero. Next is 10 through 13. 10 is ordinance to approve a development agreement for the property located southwest of 120th Street and West Maple Road with Dingman's Investment LLC providing site development standards. 11 is ordinance to rezone the property from community commercial and general commercial to community commercial district portions are located within the flood fringe overlay district. 12 is ordinance to amend the boundaries of the major commercial corridor overlay district and incorporate property in that district. A Planning Board and Plan Department recommend approval. And 13 is resolution that the application for a major amendment to special use permit to allow body and fender repair services is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Plan Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 10 through 13 are today. Proponents, please.
Afternoon, Jason Thielen and E&amp;A Consulting Group. On behalf of the applicant, and with me today is Mr. Boyd Dingman, who is the owner and operator of Dingman's Auto Body. Here asking for your approval for our change of zone and our special use permit, which is really to allow the Dingman's location here at 120th and Maple to expand from 9,000 into an additional building of almost 22,000 square feet. A lot of that has to do with auto manufacturers going to the idea that we repair less and replace more. Mr. Dingman sits on the national side of collision repair, and as they've worked through with manufacturers, they are, it's cheaper for them just to replace larger parts, and so instead of fixing them, and so there's, it's large items that have to provide room for those, that kind of storage in, in their location as well, and as well as unfortunately the demand that may happen for those that end up in little fender benders. This is our current site plan here. If you're not familiar with the site, it is currently a fantasies convenience store location, so we'll be tearing that down, removing all the, everything on site that you see, removing the underground tanks, taking care of that site, and then building a new building that will look similar to this building here, which, which replaced this location in Papillion about three, four years ago, maybe. While it won't be exactly the same as the mixed-use, mixed commercial corridor overlay that's a part of this project, requires urban design code to be attached to this, change of zone, special use permit, we have to have foresighted architecture, so we are meeting that. We are working with the West property owner here. Public Works has required an access easement, as there's, there's four accesses through here, we're actually reducing those access points to one, consolidating them to this location, which we are required to have an access easement between these two properties per Public Works, and in addition, working with them to make the building look a little more like an office to satisfy some of their concerns, which would be adding some glass on the front edge of this building. This is the, so this is the existing location, glass. New building is here, glass, and then we're adding strips of glass, looking at doing that as well as on the corner, so I have a much more of an office look, which will satisfy that West property owner, some of their concerns. We also have a development agreement that locks down the special use permit just to the Dingman Auto Body collision, so that if they were to sell at some point, that new user would have to come into the city, ask for a special use permit, and go through the whole process themselves, so it's just not transferable over to anyone that buys the business. In addition, in that development agreement, there is a restriction on any billboard, freestanding billboard uses, so you will not be able to see any billboards going up, which I know is a concern with another property owner adjacent to us. Dingman's Auto Body has been around a long time, always well-respected in the community. He's more than happy to answer any questions you might have, as well as I.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Motion?
I motion to approve. I just wanted to make one comment if I could, Mr. President.
Oh, Ms. Milton, go ahead.
I, I just want to say thank you. Usually we get, usually we get here, and then we have neighbors coming down and complaining, then we're laying it over, we're meeting with them and trying to resolve these things, and I just appreciate Dingman's going out and doing all of that before they got here. And that's why you, you see nobody objecting today, because they made, they made some concessions, made sure that both, that the moles are across the street...
Correct.
...and the other business owners to the west, that they worked through all those before they came to us, and so I just wanted to say thank you.
You are welcome.
Thank you. Second. Moved and seconded to approve items 10 through 13, no further lights. Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
10 through 13 are passed, seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, agenda items number 14 and 15 should be laid over for two weeks. Item number 16 is resolution, special use permit application for a special use permit to allow daycare services general in an R4 single-family residential, high-density, located at 18324 Adams Circle is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Plan Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 16 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 16, no further lights. Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
16 is adopted, seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, agenda item number 17 should be laid over two weeks for publication, public hearing. Liquor? Item number 18, Hy-Vee Incorporated, Hy-Vee drugstores, food stores, gas, and restaurants. Request permission to appoint Rob Reeve, manager.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 18 is today. Proponents, please.
My name's Rob Reeve. I'm with Hy-Vee. Last meeting, you had a couple of questions regarding one of our facilities here in Omaha. I brought a gentleman from our corporate office who can answer the questions you may have.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. Ms. Milton asked me to...
Give me your name and address, just for the record, please.
My apologies, John Brown. Hy-Vee Incorporated, 5820 West Town Parkway, west of Wayne, Iowa.
Thank you.
Ms. Milton asked me to come down and explain where, where we are in relationship to a notice of violation to the noise ordinance that we received last fall at our 132nd Street facility. I'll, I'll try and be as brief as possible, but there's a long story attached to this. There's just, it's been a, a long saga of engineering starts, hits and misses. We received the notice and promptly started looking at options to put a shield up and screen the offending unit for sound and visual. We did that using a plywood structure. This was back in January, late December. We did it as a temporary means as to check sound levels when we did put up the screen. We have fiduciary duty to make sure that what we're doing is actually going to be effective work, and it's not a waste of Hy-Vee's money, so we checked it with the plywood, with the plywood screen and took it back down, and then we went through the bidding process for a permanent screen to go up of that, to go around that unit and screen the noise from the neighbors. The cost came back high. Again, we have a fiduciary duty. We looked at engineering alternatives. We bid all those alternatives out, presented them. The screen wall turned out to be the best solution at this time to address the issue that we're having there. So, we contracted with the screen wall company to go ahead and start designing that screen wall unit, and they designed a unit that weighed 17,000 pounds, and when we checked it against the structural steel on the building, essentially if we had put that unit as is up on our roof around our rooftop unit, the whole work would have fallen through the roof and landed on the sales floor, which wouldn't have done anybody any good. So, from that point, we hired a structural engineer and an acoustical engineer to work with our, the firm that's producing the sound wall. And to this point, we have come up with a solution. We're going to be moving the physical unit that's making the noise itself over one bay, and we're going to be building the screen wall as well. It requires us adding joists to the underside of our structure under the roof. The steel for those, for that structure has been ordered and is in schedule. The screen wall has been ordered and is, is been scheduled to be manufactured. We don't have a hard date yet when all this will be installed, but we've spent quite a bit of time, money, and resources fixing all this. We do feel we owe Ms. Milton and city staff an apology. We didn't do a very good job of communicating what we were doing. We, we went through a lot of design iterations trying to solve this problem and did a fairly poor job of communicating what we were doing and where we were at in the process, so our apologies for that oversight, but that is, we have, we've been taking the, the issue seriously, and we've been working diligently on it. We've just had one engineering problem after another to overcome, and we feel we've got it under control and we have a solution. It's just a matter of time to get it implemented at this point. When we do have a hard schedule, we will forward that information to the city and to Ms. Milton. Any questions?
I, I wanted to say thank you, and we had a meeting...
Let me close the public hearing first.
Thank you.
So, are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Ms. Milton?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to thank you, Mr. Brown, for coming down, for spending the time with the neighbors this morning and with us, and, and I know you don't have a timeframe, but the steel's been ordered, everything's been ordered, you're just waiting for the arrival, so when we say we don't have a timeframe unlike where we were two years ago where there was no timeframe, this is, end of the summer would be the longest we'd have to wait, so to speak.
We hope it is sooner than that, but with all the missteps that we've had with engineering and the design process, we're hesitant to give you a hard date, but we're hoping to have this wrapped up in a month or two.
Okay, and, and that's what we wanted to hear, and I want to thank you for taking your time and coming down today.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, and with, with that, I would, I would move to approve...
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded to approve item 18, there are no further lights. Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
18 is approved, seven to zero. Item number 19, Fairway Meat Market, 168 at 8900 West Center Road, Class C liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 19 is today. Proponents, please.
Mike McCormick, Fairway Stores Corporate Office, 2300 Industrial Park Ave., Boone, Iowa.
Thanks, Mike. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Quiet store. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 19, there are no further lights. Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
19 is adopted, seven to zero. 20, 21, and 22 are all one case. They're all ZO's Pizza. 20 is ZO's Pizza at 1109 Howard Street, class I liquor license, new application, old location. 21 is ZO's at 7834 West Dodge Road, and 22 is ZO's Pizza at 12997 West Center Road.
Public hearing on agenda, items numbers 20, 21, and 22 are today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Rick Ludwig, representing and operating partner with 550 Degrees LLC, doing business at ZO's.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve items 20 through 22, no further lights. Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
20 through 22 are adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item number 23, German American Society at 3717 South 120th. Request permission to appoint Raquel Nudelman, manager.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 23 is today. Proponents, please.
Rochelle Nudelman with German American Society?
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 23, no further lights. Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Public hearing on agenda item number twenty-three is today. Proponents, please.
Rochelle Nudelman with German American Society.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve item twenty-three. No further lights, roll call.
Paul Thompson Festerson Gurnat Jerem Milton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty through Twenty-two are adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-three, German American Society at Thirty-seven Seventeenth South One Hundred and Twentieth. Request permission to appoint Raquel Nudelman, manager.
Public hearing on agenda item number twenty-three is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, I'm Michelle Ford with Chuck E. Cheese.
Hi, Michelle. Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve item number twenty-four. There are no further lights, roll call.
Paul Thompson Festerson Gurnat Jerem Milton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-five is approved, seven to zero. Item number twenty-five, Chuck E. Cheese, Two-Two-Five North Seventy-Sixth Street. Request promotion, request permission to appoint Raquel, Michelle Ford, manager.
Public hearing on agenda item number twenty-five is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, I'm Michelle Ford with Chuck E. Cheese.
Hi, Michelle. Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving, it's been moved and seconded to approve item twenty-five. There are no further lights, roll call.
Paul Thompson Festerson Gurnat Jerem Milton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-five is approved, seven to zero. Item twenty-six is Olive Garden Italian Restaurant, Seventy-five Oh-Five Dodge Street. Request permission to appoint Brandon Degree, manager.
Public hearing on agenda item number twenty-six is today. Proponents, please.
Hello. Good afternoon, council members. Mr. President, Brandon Degree, Seven Oh-Five, Seventy-five Oh-Five Dodge Street, Olive Garden, please.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve item twenty-six. No further lights, roll call.
Paul Thompson Festerson Gurnat Jerem Milton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-six is approved, seven to zero. Item twenty-seven, your, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jazz Louisiana Kitchen, Fourteen Twenty-One Farnum Street. Request permission to appoint Patrick McQuarman, manager.
Public hearing on agenda item number twenty-seven is today. Proponents, please.
Patrick McQuarman, manager, Jazz Louisiana Kitchen.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve item twenty-seven. No further lights, roll call.
Paul Thompson Festerson Gurnat Jerem Milton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-seven is approved, seven to zero. Item number twenty-eight is Omaha Tap House, Fourteen Oh-Three Farnum Street. Request permission to appoint Naomi Burke, manager.
Public hearing on agenda item number twenty-eight is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Naomi Burke, Omaha, Nebraska, Omaha Tap House.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve item twenty-eight. There are no further lights, roll call.
Paul Thompson Festerson Gurnat Jerem Milton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-eight is approved, seven to zero. Item number twenty-nine, Thai Cuisine, Five-Five-Five North One Hundred and Fifty-Fifth Plaza. Request permission to appoint Ms. Olbrecht, manager.
Public hearing on agenda item number twenty-nine is today. Proponents, please.
My name is Willa Pon Olbrecht. I'm owner of Kai San Restaurant, One Hundred and Fifty Second Dodge.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve item twenty-nine. There are no further lights, roll call.
Paul Thompson Festerson Gurnat Jerem Milton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-nine is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Any member of City Council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda shall be taken up by City Council may be following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by City Council Rules of Order.
The public hearing, public hearings on agenda items numbers thirty through Thirty-two were held on April nineteenth, twenty sixteen. Moving and seconded to approve items thirty through Thirty-two. No further lights, roll call.
Paul Thompson Festerson Gurnat Jerem Milton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Thirty through Thirty-two are passed, seven to zero.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers thirty-three through Forty-nine are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve items thirty-three through Forty-nine. No further lights, roll call.
Paul Thompson Festerson Gurnat Jerem Milton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Thirty-three through Forty-nine are adopted, seven to zero. Ordinance on final reading, item number fifty. Ordinance established in the Old Town Elkhorn Business Improvement District. A is a document submitted by Rex Moats. B is a document submitted by Bernard Indenbosch, Deputy City Attorney, advising the Elkhorn Business Improvement Board, has requested that the ordinance to establish the district be placed on file.
Moving and seconded to place number fifty on file, roll call.
Paul Thompson Festerson Gurnat Jerem Milton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Fifty is placed on file, seven to zero. Resolution, item number fifty-one, resolution attached, Adam Park Residential Tax and Financing Reinvestment Project Plan for the redevelopment site located south of Thirty-Sixth Court and Maple Street intersections, which proposed the new construction of senior housing complex consisting of sixteen structures for a total of eighteen townhome-style cottage houses with the city's participation through the allocation of TIF is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-one is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Don Seaton. I'm with the Omaha City Planning Department. The Adams Park TIF redevelopment project plan is an infill development in North Omaha, as you can see up there, just south of Thirty-Sixth and Maple and south of Martin Luther King Elementary School. It's an eighteen-unit senior living project, independent senior living. It's being undertaken by the Holy Name Housing Corporation, who has some experience with very similar types of development and senior units. The three-point-five-acre site is pretty much an overgrown, weedy, neglected dumping ground right now in North Omaha, and it's a blighted parcel and is a blight on the neighborhood. This appears to be a very, very welcome project. The total project cost is four-point-nine million dollars. The TIF amount requested is two-hundred-twenty-one thousand dollars. This is also a low-income housing tax credit project. As you can see from the overhead picture, the site is going to require quite a bit of site work, which is all TIF-eligible costs, and will also include a very large amount of public improvements, utility costs primarily. Between the site grubbing and the utility work, we're looking at over eight-hundred-seventy-five thousand dollars in TIF-eligible costs. That more than covers the two-hundred-twenty-one thousand dollar TIF request. This will also be a project that creates twelve additional permanent full-time jobs and approximately fifty-two construction positions. The land use is appropriate for the site. You have recently reviewed and approved the replating and rezoning of this site for this project. We feel a little hamstuh neighborhood, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Mike Golly, Forty-three Twenty-four Fort Street, Executive Director of Holley Name Housing, and answering any questions you have.
Thank you, Mike. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. It's been moved and seconded to approve. Just a comment or two, Mike, just very quickly. Mike is the new executive director of Holy Name Housing. Wanted to give him an opportunity to, wanted to let everybody know that Mike is our new executive director, and I also want to thank you for finishing up this project. This has been a project that a number of people have wanted to see occur, and it's going to be of great benefit to that part of, that part of the community. So we, I appreciate the effort. So thank you. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve item number fifty-one. There are no further lights, roll call.
Paul Thompson Festerson Gurnat Jerem Milton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Fifty-one is adopted, seven to zero. Item number fifty-two, resolutionly attached amendments to the Omaha Council plus fiscal year two thousand and eleven, thirteen and fourteen, consolidated submission for community planning and development program is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-two is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve item fifty-two. No further lights, roll call.
Paul Thompson Festerson Gurnat Jerem Milton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Fifty-two is adopted, seven to zero. Item number fifty-two, resolution that the City Council encourages and supports the Public Works Director in immediate undertake, to immediately undertake a comprehensive evaluation of the city's solid waste, yard waste, and recyclable collection services for the purpose of determining the optimal service parameters that would compromise a future request for proposal for services.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-three is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve. There are no further lights, roll call.
Paul Thompson Festerson Gurnat Jerem Milton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Fifty-three is adopted, seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule Seventy, up agenda item number fifty-four should be laid over three weeks for publication in public hearing. Ordinance on second reading, item number fifty-five, ordinance approving redevelopment tax and financing loan agreement with BD Three LLC to implement the BD Three Blackstone Tax and Refinancing Redevelopment Project Plan for the project's site at Thirty-eight Fourteen, Thirty-nine Oh-Nine, Thirty-nine Thirteen, and Thirty-nine Twenty-One Farnum Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-five is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Bridget Hadley, City Planning, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Fifty-six, ordinance approving redevelopment and tax increment financing loan agreement with GSCD Three Eighty, Thirty-eight Oh Four, to implement the Colonial Apartment Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan for the project's site at One Four Zero, One Four Four South Thirty-eighth Street for the purpose of rehabilitating the Colonial Hotel.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-six is today. Proponents, please.
Bridget Hadley, City Planning, here to answer questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Fifty-seven, ordinance approving a redevelopment tax and financing loan agreement with RH Land Management Company to implement the Blue Lion Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan for the project's site located at Twenty-four Twenty-three and Twenty-four Twenty-five North Twenty-fourth Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-seven is today. Proponents, please.
Bridget Hadley, City Planning, here to answer questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item fifty-seven, ordinance-
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight. Ordinance to amend the interlocal cooperation agreement between the city and Douglas County controlling the distribution of keynote lottery proceeds to extend the agreement for five years.
Public hearing on agenda item fifty-eight is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item fifty-nine, ordinance to amend the interlocal cooperation agreement with the city of Bennington controlling the distribution of keynote lottery proceeds to extend the agreement for an additional five years.
Public hearing on agenda item fifty-nine is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Sixty, Metropolitan Utilities District's financial statement, and something that'll schedules December thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, with the independent audit report there.
Public hearing on agenda item number, oh, that just needs to be placed on file. Moving and seconded to place on file.